Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our Monday, February 6th Council Budget Discussion. We've got a number of issues coming today, including some parking, sanitary sewer, solid waste, stormwater, housing, and self-supported municipal improvement districts. Mr. Manager, let's quickly turn it over to you, make a couple of comments, and let's get going.
All right, sounds good, Mayor. So yes, this is our annual workshop, starting with our budget. This is obviously my recommendation and an opportunity to go through the entire documents, ask any questions, see what changes you'd like to make, and obviously let the public know what this recommendation looks like as well. So we've broken this up into two pieces. We have the non-general fund and non-CIP today. We'll cover those two issues on Friday. And then we have Monday morning available for council members. We have individual questions, and you want to come in on Monday morning to ask about some things as well.
That would be today?
Uh, next to the following.
Oh, next Monday?
Yes.
Not this Monday?
Well, we've got half a day today that, what that leaves for us today is Nick will go through is the topics you brought up with the enterprise funds and our utilities. So I'll turn it over to Nick.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Honorable Mayor and council members, Nick Shaw, Finance Director. I get to stand before you today, thankfully standing, because last year I was in a wheelchair. So I'm very happy to stand here and talk to you about budget today. We wouldn't be here without the hard work on the Finance Department, especially our research and budget staff, one of which is going to be assisting me today so I can get a little bit of a break from standing, and you don't have to hear my voice the whole morning. So in a bit, we'll have Joe come up and start talking about parking. But like Scott had stated, you know, this is the city manager's recommended budget. We've worked through on doing these different topics. And go ahead and stop us along the way if you have any questions, and we'll try and address that and get that through for this half day. And again, we have that CIP and what's called our operations, which is our general fund, road use, and local option that will actually be on Friday as well. So these are more of the enterprise and kind of unique items that we go through every year. So we'll kind of bullet through these topics today in this particular order. And as we go along, like I said, happy to address questions, and we also have other city staff to be able to address the specific questions if they come up. So I'm going to hand this off to Joe on the parking enterprise.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Joe Bransister, Deputy Finance Director. As Nick alluded to, I'll be doing a couple of presentations today to help Nick out. First topic we're going to discuss today is our parking enterprise. The city of Des Moines has seven parking garages currently, Fourth and Grand, East Second and Grand, Ninth and Locust, Third and Court, Fifth and KEO, Seventh and Center, which we often refer to as the Park and Ride, and Fifth and Walnut. We did have another garage, the Eighth and Mulberry Garage, which we sold in fiscal year 2020. So this is the current inventory we have of garages. As far as individual spots within the garages, we have 5,422 garage spots and 3,258 on-street parking spots for a total of 8,680 total parking spots within our system.
Is that just downtown on-street parking?
Yes, that would just be metered spots.
Gotcha.
This slide shows our average occupancy by garage. Of note on this slide, you can really see the effects of COVID-19 beginning in fiscal year 20, where we see, that's the gray bar, we see a significant drop in our occupancy rates. We do see some recovery coming out of COVID. Of note on this slide, you can see our East Grant garage has maintained pretty consistent rates through the pandemic. And also you see off to the right, Fifth and Walnut, that came online for the first and second quarter of '23, so we'll continue to see those rates rise. And then we have that dotted line separating Park and Ride. We treat that a little differently, and we'll get into that a little later. This slide is again showing some of the effects of COVID-19 and how we are recovering slowly from that. The blue line is our total non-Park and Ride, when the green line is our Park and Ride. Some of those little dips and raises you see are often related to event parking, and since we're doing it by month, you do see a little bit of a wave there. But we, again, we see a slow but steady rise coming out of the April 2020 timeframe. Some general information about parking, our garage rates are $1 an hour. Our meters are Monday, I'm sorry, Monday through Saturday, nine to nine. Rates for on-street parking and parking ramps are set to encourage our long-term parkers to use the ramps as opposed to street parking and use those for daily users using our businesses. Daily rates for on-street parking range anywhere from a quarter on the fringes of downtown to $1.25 in the core. We do have some prime area parking related to the entertainment district, which goes up to $1.75 at 5:00 p.m. And as I mentioned before, that parking has really helped us with the recovery, but without a doubt, COVID really has impacted parking funds quite a great deal.
Do we know, or are we keeping track of the changes that we anticipate based on downtown businesses like going hybrid and/or part-day or leaving or anything like that?
It's something we are definitely keeping an eye on, and especially as we do see more hybrid work-from-home options, I think there is a correlation between parking garage usage and that, the decline related to that. So it is something that we're monitoring. We don't necessarily have a business aided this, therefore parking garages did that.
We don't have like a quantitative analysis of it, really?
Can you say that again, please?
We don't have like a quantitative analysis of it?
Not currently, no.
Okay.
But I mean, that's something we could take a look at, though, to try to get a more firm number on what that looks like.
Just to follow up on a question, and this is more towards Scott. What is our plan to get more people back in seats and back in the offices down there? Because what, I just, I haven't seen any type of vision or anything that we're trying to do as a city to encourage folks to come back downtown, to do the things that we need to do to help with some of the issues. I mean, parking is just one of them, obviously, but there's going, there's...
Yeah, so we have a weekly meeting. Matt Anderson, Deputy City Manager, and myself have meetings weekly with the Des Moines Partnership. And obviously, we have conversations with business owners about the importance to get more employees back into the offices. But then we also have place-making opportunities. You'll notice pop-up events and things of that nature. There are the food truck lunches and things of that nature that try and entice more people to see the activities going on downtown.
What is, you know, leading by example, something that, what is our policy for working remotely?
Yeah, and so of the 2,000 employees that the city hires roughly, there's about 10% of the workforce that are office-in-nature work. As you might imagine, we're different than an insurance or finance company in that we have police, fire, public works, and parks that need to be on-site, and that is the majority of our council, or excuse me, the majority of our staff. But for that 10% that are office-related and have an opportunity to work on projects that allow them to work from home, and that analysis is done by HR and the department directors, they have an opportunity to do an alternative work arrangement, AWA, that does allow for up to two days a week to work from home. And we have probably about 6% of our workforce that are utilizing some form of that, one or two days a week.
What's 6%? What's a number of people that are still doing that?
Probably 120, 150 on the high end, depending on seasons.
And you still have folks in your city manager's office doing that, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Lead by example.
I...
It's not leading by example, but we'll...
I will say as well that like, I'm not opposed to hybrid work situations. I think that they offer a lot of flexibility. It's just a situation of being realistic about what assets we have in parking and how is that affected by the new style of work, which is probably going to be with us for the rest of our lifetimes.
I was just going to say, if you look at the numbers, even going back, I think we should be concerned on how many garages we have versus how much parking, even if we were working here full-time. So I think that goes back to the budget of what do we maintain? Or is our housing going to go around some of these parking garages that would create a need for more parking? So I think we need to look at it in a different way, based on the numbers I saw, especially that Park and Ride. I don't know if the numbers pre-COVID were, had been that strong for as big as this. So I think that's overall discussion we should have on parking.
Yeah, and that's always been, that's always what we've talked about here, is we've had some parking. Unfortunately, we had an unfortunate situation a few years ago that most of you, I think were up here, that we had to, we had to buy another parking garage instead of having the private industry have it. So that's, that's an issue that, but yeah, no, I agree 100%. We should be out of the parking business. We should be out of the garage business. We've said it for eight years, and we had to buy another one. So I mean, that doesn't, it doesn't make these numbers look any better by doing that.
I think looking at these years of replacement, a few slides back, like 2030 and 2035 are the fastest ones coming up. Like, if we are, instead of like wanting to maintain the amount of parking that we have, wanted to sell those for redevelopment, like that would be a discussion that we could have.
Yeah, it's, that's been the discussion for eight years.
Yeah, and understand that that's, the best time to do that is when the garage needs major work or is about to come down. So the next garage that would need that type of attention is Fourth and Grand, so, but it's still about six to eight years out.
As I mentioned earlier, too, this is the map of downtown parking. I apologize if this is kind of difficult to see, but the gridded area you see is where we have the additional rate after 5:00 p.m. The blue is the regular $1.25 an hour, and then you have some additional lower-cost parking in the orange and in the purple as well. This slide is showing the breakdown between garage parking and on-street revenue. The blue line you see is the garages, the blue bar. The orange is our on-street parking, and that gray bar you see there, that gray line, that's the percentage of on-street parking revenue as a total percent of that. So you can see about 40% of our revenue for the parking system is coming from on-street parking. John Davis is here, and he'll can talk a little bit about Park DSM later, but we're pretty conservative on our estimates for '24 and '25 purposely. Hopefully, we do see that percentage increase with the on-street parking, with the complete rollout of that this year, but we just wanted to make sure we're conservative and not too aggressive on our revenue component related to the parking system. This chart is showing, again, the last chart said our on-street parking revenue is about 40%. You can see that there reflected in the red. Then this is the breakdown of revenue by garage between Second and Grand, Third and Court, Fourth and Grand, and Ninth and Locust. Those are all within a percentage of each other. The other slides talk about occupancy rate. This is talking specifically about revenue per garage. So that's how much each garage is bringing in comparative to the parking system as a whole.
You say Fourth and Grand was the first one that is going to be the oldest. Could you go back one slide? The one that has the most revenue?
It does have some of the lowest occupancy as well, too, but it's such a, there's over 1,000 parking spots in that garage.
Gotcha. Thank you.
It's not.
Yeah, we didn't put that on there just because of the nature of Park and Ride, but we do have some slides coming up later to talk about specifics of that. These are the expenditures related to Park and Ride. What we're attempting to show on this slide is the direct operating parking fund. Thank you. Saying Park and Ride too much. This is Parking Fund. The blue is our direct operating expenses. The red other is our personnel, commodities, those sort of items. The green you see is our transfer to CIP. I will call out fiscal year '22. We do have a large transfer to the CIP. That's for the Park DSM, some of the infrastructure related to getting that program rolled out. And then we have our debt service payments related to the parking system, and we'll get into that a little bit.
Quick question. My understanding is that all of the garages pay a pilot?
Yes.
Is that in the direct operating expense? Like, which of those?
It's an other expense, and on the next slide, I can show you specifically where that is. This is a breakdown of our system in total. Councilman Mandelbaum, if you look about midway through, you see indirect cost allocation, pilot, and ROI. Those are listed there. Pilot is our payment in lieu of taxes related to parking, and all our enterprises, we run it through a formula. So our assets that are not taxable, we do have a methodology to basically reimburse the general fund for some of those costs. Then we have return on investment, which is also acknowledging some of the initial general fund costs related to our parking system as well. Then we have indirect cost allocation, which is another thing that we use. It's a formula-based calculation that allows us to recoup some of the operating costs that the city is incurring through the general fund, which parking is using some of our general fund and operational dollars to cover their system. So those are all calculated there. Other items of note...
And that's in aggregate, right?
Correct, yes.
Across all?
Do we have the revenue and expense breakdown for each garage?
Yeah, we can get that for you, for sure.
Okay.
Of note on this slide, you can see in fiscal year '22, we did receive $3.5 million of ARPA funding, as one of the themes of this presentation is COVID really hit parking hard, and that $3.5 million allows us to, if you look at the net line there, in '22, have a not ending in a deficit. You can see the beginning fund balance and ending fund balance at the very bottom there. Of note, you can see in 2023 amended, we are running a slight deficit of about $850,000, but the way we've budgeted in '24 and '25 going forward, again, very conservatively, we're anticipating basically to break even in '24 and starting to see an increase in our revenues, or our net operating revenues in '25 as well. So there's a lot of information on this slide, but if you have any specific questions, please let me know.
I just have one quick one on your revenue at the top line, total operating revenue. I see the parking garage, I see the meter. What's other?
I believe that's related to contracted parking spots. We do have a few businesses that contract directly for parking with us.
Okay, so for whatever reason, we had some that spiked that compared to not only your projections moving forward, but your actual in '21, $77,000. Not that that's a huge number, but...
I can get you an answer on what that is specifically.
Okay.
As everyone's aware, we have moved towards a new parking system with Park DSM. It replaces our existing metered parking with an on-street multi-space, multi-pay stations and pay over the phone that started in 2021. With routine maintenance, we're anticipating this to be completed in April of '23, and we also have additional electronic charging stations that were installed in at the Fourth and Grand location and Ninth and Locust garage. The old meters, again, have been replaced with the multi-space parking kiosks. Of note, we do have a really high rate of payments through the app at about 60%. 28% is credit cards at the kiosks, and the remaining 12% is coinage at the kiosks. So there are multiple ways to pay, and I think we'll see increased compliance with this program as we get it rolled out in all of the remainder of this fiscal year and into next.
Has the amount of violations dropped since we've installed this with the app and being able to add additional time?
I don't know the answer to that. John, John, we can look into that as well.
Might be something we can look at.
Yeah.
I know it may be a little soon now, but maybe in six months or so, it'd be interesting to see.
And John Davis is here, too, from engineering for any specific Park DSM questions. Improvements and improvement in maintenance, we do use our capital fund for periodic facility condition review. Our ongoing maintenance expenses will continue to rise as some of our facilities age. We have moved to complete automation of our parking ramps, which hopefully we see in '24, '25, a drop in some of our overall operating costs as we've invested in automatic gates and no longer have to have attendance at each garage. So these are the expenditures related to our capital improvement plan. As alluded to earlier, in 2023, you see that big number for on-street parking technology, that's Park DSM. And then we do budget $1 million annually for routine maintenance and repairs on the capital side of the house. This is our Park and Ride budget. Again, we treat this separately from other parking garages due to some requirements for how the garage was constructed back in the 90s.
Joe, if I could, because there are federal funds that help pay for it, so that's why it has to be separated out. Thank you.
In the 90s, there were federal funds that helped pay for it?
Is it 1990?
The garage was constructed in '99, so I'm guessing the financing was probably mid-'90s sometime.
Okay, thank you.
Of note on this slide is transfer of excess fund balance. You can see $317,000 in 2021 was transferred to DART, Des Moines Area Rapid Transit, for, basically as part of the agreement, any additional fund balance of $2.5 million gets transferred to DART for their operations. So that last happened in 2021. As part of the new agreement, anything above the 95 cent levy rate is transferred to DART. In 2023, you see $790,000 transferred to DART and $1.2 million in 2024. Based off the current fund balance, you can see we're expecting to end 2024 about $846,000. So we all have a limited budget available for transfers to DART within 2025.
What, how are the 95% levy in this related?
Nick, I want to tackle that one.
Actually, I can take a stab at Nick and jump in as well. So three years ago, there was a new funding formula established by DART that would require the city of Des Moines to contribute more than just the 95 cent tax rate that was in place, and that was around $300,000 the first year, the $7.90 that you see in the second year, which is the year we're in now, and then the third and final year in commitment of $1.2 million that's coming up next fall.
Okay.
That was in order to give DART an opportunity to get legislative changes made in a three-year period.
Yeah, so that's the contributions, DART. What is transit system, DART?
Yeah, I was going to say, that's mainly the D-line and other supports for specific transit related downtown.
Okay, so we contribute that from our Park and Ride fund and also the contribution above the 95?
Yeah, yep. That was a three-year agreement, the above the 95. Prior to that, we had, I want to say, three years where the agreement that we had with DART was anything over the total dollar amount across operations and CIP was over 2.5, we would have to designate that. That's where, in the past, we contributed to some of the electric buses on their 20% match, as well as some additional bus stops and different things like that.
So as we talked a little bit about DART, as this goes away, and we have maybe no legislative changes this year, we don't know what's going to happen. What is, what is the recourse for service, our service level and the funding level that our residents are paying?
Yeah, so I think that's a great question for the DART Commission, and I know that they're looking through that. It's been voiced, in my understanding, well-understood, that the cash infusion above the tax rate at $1.2 million would need to end.
Do you want Josh to answer it, or?
I would leave it at that.
Who do you want to give me the answer?
I think it's a bigger conversation. I mean, the impacts are going to be pretty significant to our residents to, as folks know, this was an eight-year funding formula to account for, better account for where the service is and the cost of that service. The question is going to be how we value transit as a body, because there is still a balance in the Park and Ride and a balance that has to be used towards transit. So that's going to be part of the discussion, but there's going to need to be a discussion about what happens in the broader sense with funding and what happens with service. At the Commission's budget workshop, there was, there were a couple scenarios, service-related scenarios, that were presented to the Commission in terms of what that looks like from a, from a service, service cut if we do not fill the budget gap at DART. And that conversation will continue. You know, the fiscal year that we're looking at is not the year that that all hits home. It's next year and the following year. And so those conversations will be ongoing over the course of the coming, the coming months and year.
And roughly, Scott, tell me how much we give to DART each year through property tax?
Is that close to 8 million?
At the 95 cents, how much do we give?
I believe that's 8 million and change.
So annually, we give DART right now through property tax, through the Des Moines residents, $8 million. And we're giving them an additional half a million to almost a million each year. So we're at 9 million now over the last almost three years that we've given to DART to help them figure out their service and funding.
I mean, do we want to get into the conversation of what transit is necessary today?
That's correct.
Excuse me, I'm still speaking, so I'm just asking the question. I just want to clarify, so the residents that are watching at home, how much money DART has been giving and how much the directors came here for the last eight years, and we've asked her how we're going to, how are we going to fix the DART issue? And we've got nothing other than they changed the funding issue to where, when it first started, we were at 95 cents when we got there, and then all the other communities were supposed to go to 95 cents, but they didn't like that once we got to 95 cents. So now they've threatened to pull out of it, and they've threatened to charge us more or do other things. And we need to think out of the box, $9 million for our residents? We should be able to provide services from your home to wherever you need to go for $9 million. That's a lot of money for the amount of ridership we have. So that...
I think those numbers are correct.
Yeah. So we'll continue. I know that that doesn't have much to do, but when I see DART in there, people need to know what part of your property taxes are being paid is DART, and that is on your property tax roll that has been maxed out, and we've given them extra money. So everyone needs to know that very clearly.
Joe, I want to apologize for interrupting you, because I agree with what you said, that it should be, DART should be able to take you from... said, that it should be, DART should be able to take you from where you are to where you need to go. Like, that's important for a transit system. And I do just want to make sure that it's clear as well, though, that the ninety-five cent levy, the eight million that Scott was talking about, that's the property tax, but then additional is from the enterprise fund, correct? So it's it's not taxed. It's it's the park, it's the amount we make on park and ride.
That is correct. The park and ride is contributing this amount extra.
And and DART used to partner with, I believe it was Yellow Cab, and I'm not going to get any more of this conversation. And and now they only, Yellow Cab does about thirty-five hundred runs a day, and they have the capacity to do ten thousand runs a day. And so to pick people up from their house and take them to where they need to go, I'm thinking that we need to think a little bit more out of the box than having people walk in the snow and and do what they need to do. We need to be able to provide them a good service, but part of that service, we need to think out of the box, because giving more money to buses that aren't always, I would say, full, you know, maybe just run them in the peak hours, I don't know how it works. I'm going to leave that up to our DART representative that's been there for three years to try to figure this out. But to keep giving them more money and to and to have our levy rate increased and the people up at the Hill talking about property taxes, that's an issue. And everyone needs to know that that is part of the issue of where our property taxes are in the city of Des Moines. So I'll stop, we'll continue, because otherwise we'll be here all day if we keep talking about it.
Well, I mean, I I think we should, I'd like to just comment a little bit, because there are four point two million, we're, pre-pandemic, there were four point two million rides per year on DART.
That includes school and the fair.
It it includes both of those.
Which is about two million.
No, it's not. It's about four hundred thousand for for the fair annually.
Better go back and look at twenty twenty's ridership, Josh.
Plus, plus rides. So we, it's over three million rides a year for our residents. And I, you know, when you do do the math, in in terms of what what we're paying, I mean, if you're proposing to try and fill that gap with just taxi rides, there are going to be a lot of people left at home.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that at all. I'm suggesting, well, you better look out of the box, because nine million dollars of my constituents' money going to not a not a whole lot of percentage are riding that bus, we better figure out what we're going to do. And and that's not taxing or charging more for DART through the property tax levy.
There there are a lot of folks who are your constituents as well. If you look at the the routes on on Indianola and Southwest Ninth that have twenty thousand rides a month plus.
I don't even have a route on Southeast Fourteenth, the busiest corridor that we have. I don't even have a route there. Right?
Sounds like you're asking for more investment, then.
I'm I'm talking about, we need to figure something out. Today's not the place, it needs to be out there so everyone knows what folks are paying. And we all need to be aware of it.
It's an opportunity to revisit.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and I'll I'll stop.
All right, that concludes parking. Any questions?
Thank you.
If not, yes.
Yeah, Joe, just one question about, what type of fees do we pay for the provider for the on-street parking, whether that's a service fee for for use of credit cards or just that technology? What's that per month?
Um, I don't know the specific per month number. I know there is a service fee per transaction.
I think that was, it's been a few months, I know that was provided at one time, but there's a-
Sure, have John.
Contracted.
I see an answer creeping up here.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. John Davis, City Traffic Engineer. The monthly fee that we pay for the pay station is roughly thirty dollars a month per pay station.
And we have around-
So you multiply that by about four hundred is what roughly we have.
Okay, and then for the fees for just the hourly parking, is there like a bank service fee or something that we, just like a merchant would pay?
Correct. We have a, we have transaction fees that are credit card fees for the mobile pay app. There's a convenience fee of twenty-five cents to start the initial session. If you extend that, there is no additional charge. The convenience or the transaction fee is roughly, I think, around three percent. It varies, we have, it varies for each credit card, but roughly it's it's three percent.
I think it depends on debit or credit.
Yeah, which card is used?
Right.
It also determines the average, the dollar amount of your average.
Kind of comes in that way on the fee.
Then we do take American Express, too, right?
Yes.
And Discover.
Yeah.
That rivals it.
Yep.
Oh, and John, did your vendor ever get back whether Apple Pay is available on on both the machines and, yeah?
Apple Pay is available on the, at the kiosks. It is not yet available on Park DSM. It's a matter of Park Mobile getting certified with the credit card processor, and they have not done that.
So originally, it was supposed to be the last quarter of last year. Do they have a new timetable?
I do not have a new time estimate from them, no.
Anything else? Thank you.
That means we're not getting it, Carl.
All right, we're going to move on. Looks like sanitary sewer.
So for sanitary sewer, it is split between two different, are the staff and everything that are split between the sanitary and the storm, it's a split of like fifty-five, forty-five percent. When we actually work through the sanitary side of this, there is a maintenance of over a thousand miles of sewer line. What they have to do is go through the planning and designing for our capital projects, as well as the compliance of the state and regular, state and state and federal laws and regulations that oversee that that sanitary sewer operation. These pictures kind of depict kind of the four major areas for sanitary sewer, the long-term control plan, as well as the lining, connection fees, and the citywide program as well. The full-time staff has broken out as of fifty, fifty-two point nine. That is, when you add them both together, it is a total of a hundred and twenty employees when you look at both sewers together. So we don't have a point nine individual. This right here is our actuals and projected operating revenue within this, within this recommended budget. As we get to the last slide where we suggest a revenue rate increase on this particular one, it is a five percent for fiscal year twenty-four. When we look at the total budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, you can see that the majority of our costs within the sanitary fund is WRA costs, almost at fifty percent of our budget. Then our operation, on our operation side is about that twenty-five percent, and then between the debt transfer to CIP for our projects, as well as pilot and ROI, make up the other fifty. From here, you kind of get a history of some of the expenses going back from nineteen through our recommended twenty-four. Some of the things to note is the debt. There is a very large number in that fiscal year twenty twenty, as well as a slightly bigger in twenty twenty-two. Those were from redeeming debt early. So from in twenty, so we had paid off the twenty-twelve serieses in twenty twenty, and then the twenty twenty-four in fiscal year twenty-two, so this past fiscal year that we were, I had just completed. That means we do not have any revenue debt within the sanitary sewer fund at this time. The only debt that we have is that state revolving loan, the SRF, loaning that we have with the separation project. So going forward, it is, does not include the revenue debt. If you look at our operations, once you exclude the the WRA part, it kind of gives you a true depiction on our operation side of the house, on the city of Des Moines itself. From here, again, fifty-six percent is on employee costs, and then kind of breaking that out on some of the other costs of the billing agency fee, which those are the costs from Des Moines Water Works being included in the water bill. And then our equipment maintenance, repair, payment to contractors, those are different payments to vendors that we have that are doing services for us. Some of the other charges that we have is workman's comp, and some pump reimbursement programs are included in those other funds. Yes, for, there's other stuff, but those are the two that are the largest within that Going into our CIP fundings, this kind of shows the different components of funds that go into the CIP program that we have. As you can see, the the ongoing investment that we have for sanitary is the sanitary fund, operating fund itself. We also have five million of ARPA that got allocated to the sanitary sewer, as well as you can see the large number of that state revolving loan. That is for those separation projects that should be being completed here in the next couple of years.
The sanitary sewer fund is exclusively operating, is that what you said?
That sanitary sewer fund is the transfers from the operating to the capital projects. So if I go back to, so this right here, the the gray area is that capital projects transfer. They're considered two, kind of two different packages within the operating fund, or from the sanitary sewer fund itself has the operating piece and the capital project piece.
These are the amounts, Nick, that are able to pay for capital projects.
Yes, with cash.
With sewer cash, which is great, right? So that we're not issuing as much debt through the sewer.
So part of that three point five is operating, and part of that three point five gets transferred to CIP?
No, the operating, the operations operate at a level to be able to put this much cash into the CIP to do lining and other projects.
Okay, so this is the extra.
From from the operation, yes.
So sanitary sewer fund, like, there is an operation piece that's not listed here?
Uh, if you-
Not on this slide.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah. This actually breaks out the expenses on the capital project side, so you kind of see what those funds actually go towards. From from this, you can see that the sewer lining and the trunk sewer are those ongoing investments that we have allocated for every year. And then the start of in fiscal year twenty-seven, we do have a bumping up on that lining costs in that project.
I just want to be clear, when somebody's putting in a new development, they pay for the sewers. It's not the city's cost. This is not being used to put any-
The private side, yeah.
-infrastructure in, yeah.
But it still has to get to the certain area for that development to be able to tap into that.
Right. Which we did on the north side of town a few years ago.
And I won't claim to know all these projects in depth. I know that in the past I've had Patrick or Jonathan come up and speak to these specifically. But these kind of the overall CIP projects that we have, where is that kind of the reddish color, is that separation projects? And then what we have are some of the expansion projects in green as well from a citywide.
It looks like, if you go back two slides, one more. You've got about, what, twenty-three million dollars of the thirty-two million for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget here that are going to sewer separations.
That's correct.
Does that pretty much, it looks like, moving forward, clean up that separation work?
Yeah, as as we kind of get into the next kind of slides, the the ones that were going to be separated will be separated. We will have some portions of the city that will continue to be in combined sanitary and and storm, but ones that we we intended to separate are going to be separated with these projects.
It seemed like we were told at the time that this whole thing started that there was a requirement by the federal government to do that separation.
Yeah, through twenty twenty-four.
So are you saying some of them are not required to do that, and we've got a bunch more out there that we're not doing?
Yeah, just one major area, if you want to come forward with the debt, the challenges of the combined sewer in downtown to separate those with the federal decree that was not required to be separated, and that's-
Mayor and members of council, Jonathan Gannon, Public Works Director. The answer to your question is is yes and no. We were required to do enough separations to eliminate overflows. So there is not a problem with having a combined sewer, except at the point where it gets full when it rains and discharges untreated sewage into the rivers. So the separation projects were designed to alleviate pressure inside the system when it rains. We still have combined sewers in those, all these neighborhoods where we have done sewer separations. We've just added additional storm sewer to to take storm water out, enough storm water out of the system, so that when it rains, the combined sewers don't overflow at their overflow points where they have for decades. And we remain with almost the entirety of downtown and the East Village are permanently not separated. That was the reason for the combined sewer solid separation facility and the twelve-foot diameter pipe that was built a decade ago between downtown and the treatment plant to kind of store that water and then provide some emergency treatment four or five times a year and discharge at the plant rather than at at directly untreated sewage into the river downtown. So we we are maintaining and will maintain in perpetuity combined sewers, both in the downtown and in the outlying neighborhoods, but have been adding at at significant expense under that federal consent decree enough storm sewer to to relieve the pressure on that system during rain.
So there's no overflow into the regular waters?
Right. The the point of federal regulation is to eliminate the overflow, not the combined sewers. So we have designed the storm, the storm sewers to eliminate the overflows. So we have presently two overflows left in the system that are in the process of being, getting enough separation and storage built in the system to eliminate those overflows. And once we're done, we'll be completely done with overflows, discharging untreated sewage into the river.
Just just for the education, everybody here, is we look upstream and we look at other areas of the state, it's, my understanding and was in the past, that usually only when there was high flows, and what they used to look at it is the solution to pollution's dilution. And so it was so low because of the high flows, because of storm events or melting events or whatever. Upstream, there are places that I was told, you know, they discharge directly into it, let's say, from some plant of some sort that will go unnamed, but there's a whole bunch of them, and they discharge into some of our water source. And I asked, how were they able to do that? And I was told by some people electeds up from those areas, well, the solution to pollution's dilution. I thought, really? How do they apply that so strictly to us and allow actual plants? I don't need an answer, but it just seems unfortunate that that-
There are, let's say, about a dozen regulated facilities in our in our watersheds that are, have the same permit and have to meet the same water quality standards that we do. There are a number of facilities that that fly underneath the threshold that requires regulation, and they are exempt.
And this just kind of highlights what what Jonathan was touching base on with the long-term control plan and the downtown remaining fully combined. As we go into some of these other projects that that you can see here, near West Side, sewer separation- Separation, it's kind of color coded there with the legends as to the different phases that we have, as well as some of the pump stations, pump station that is planned or in that, in the map as well. It is expected to be completed in, was it completed this year? Is that correct? The River Bend and King Irvine separation, that's phased out as well, between three different phases, and then Phase Two and Phase Three were broken out into an A and a B as well.
And that is also completed?
It looks like on the budget this is going to happen this year.
Okay, I'm looking at the map a few pages back, that the red areas were fiscal year 21, and that was one of the red areas.
Oh, the Phase Two A, you mean?
No, I mean, if you go back a couple of slides. Another one, yeah, this one, the red area, King Irving, and
Yeah, that legend hasn't been updated, sorry.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
The CIP sheet that shows the expenditures that we intend, that shows the completion Then we also have the Western Air Saw Run Sewer Separation as well. There's a very large component, like I said, when we were first starting, was WRA. This is the WRA Board approved CIP projects that are currently moving going forward. This is for their 23, 24 CIP. With that, you're seeing the conveyance, as well as the treatment projects that they have, the total of which, you've got 170 on the conveyance and then 365 on that treatment side. From that, it is based on a three-year average of flows, and right now, the city of Des Moines is just under 50%.
To be clear, you know, when we talk about the flows going through our sanitary sewer, if we were more efficient in using water, that would reduce those flows and reduce costs?
Yes. One thing that we have noticed in the last couple of years is we actually are showing a decrease in our flows each year, not just from, not just from the sewer separation projects, but I think there might be some on the usage side as well. As we look at the annual debt payments for sanitary, as one of the earlier slides that talked about our debt and that large, large expense that we had in 2020 and 22 on clearing our revenue debt, going forward, we have those SRF loans that we have to pay off. Our side is that blue, and then the red shows the WRA debt. So as ours are kind of curtailing, we are seeing a very large increase on the WRA side. To kind of summarize some of the information that we covered on sanitary sewer, we've got the long-term control plan with the separation projects, as well as the WRA projects that are a very significant driver on, on kind of what we're doing for the rates and what we have to see, as well as the decrease in flow as well. So you're seeing a flow rate decrease and needing to kind of correlate some of that as well. So 12 million in sewer lining and repair projects to extend their life, that's within the CIP plan and that, in that five-year CIP plan. Sewer separation projects will be completed by fiscal year 2024, and then what CMO and Finance are proposing is a 5% rate increase for fiscal year 24 and 25. That kind of allows us to, with the decrease in the, in the flow that we're seeing, as well as the costs that we're seeing on the WRA side, this is what we're seeing as a need in our models going forward.
So that's 5% each year?
Yes.
So we increased last year by, do you remember how much?
I think it was 5%.
5%? And it's not our costs that are going up, it's that debt on the WRA side.
There's contributing factors in it, but there is a large amount on the WRA debt that that's worth forecasting as a big driver.
Yeah, just looking at kind of like the bar graph of, you know, we had that huge spike in paying off the debt, but it looks like our costs have generally gone down. We also had the mention of the flow decrease making costs go down as well.
Well, there's less, there's less revenue, the units that you're driving off of, which is the gallons of water, assumption through sanitary sewer side, you're having less flow going through, so you have less revenue coming in from, from a decrease on that.
You also said a decreased cost, though, is it not? How does it decrease?
Just the debt, on the debt side, because we no longer have the revenue debt, that'd be the only thing that would be a decrease on, on the ongoing operations.
The city portion of the sewer enterprise continues to go up like with inflation, somewhat normalized. The city side of the debt is going down, as Nick has talked about. The WRA contribution is going up significantly.
Yes, it was saying, there was a sentence said that like, reducing flows reduces costs.
For the WRA contribution?
Yes, for the WRA portion. So as, as that, as our flow decreases, our percent right now is about 49-ish percent for the WRA.
And they charge us based on flow?
Yep, on a three-year average. So as ours decreases, it takes a while for it to fully kind of realize those, that flow.
Okay. And the WRA sewers are not the ones that we were talking about where we're doing the separation and something like that, not the ones in the city, it's the ones that connect to our city system?
Yes, so we are paying for our, kind of our system, and then we are tapping into the WRA.
The regional system.
Yep, the regional system aspect. So it's kind of, kind of two separate ledgers, if you will, from that standpoint. We are the operating entity for, we have the operating contract for the WRA, so.
Yeah.
We are the, I want to say, from the last couple of years, it's the first time we were below that 50% mark on the flow.
So that 5% increase, does that pay for both operating and CIP for WRA?
Yes. Which we are showing, we are anticipating an increase in that, the lining, which is supposed to increase the life of this sewer, sewers that we have. Any other additional questions?
Anybody? Nick, thank you. Let's move on to solid waste.
You get me for another session.
All right, we're excited.
So we'll go into solid waste. They provide the trash, yard waste, and recyclable collection for approximately 66,000 homes in the city of Des Moines. They also operate the scrub events across the city. There are also some dumpster services that we do for the city parks, municipal buildings, WRA, and fourplex locations. The staffing is 49 full-time positions. There's 23 side loaders and 12 front loaders within the fleet that they have for solid As we look at the 2024 budget from the sources of funds, obviously, 84% is the solid waste collections of what we bill. Then there's also specifically on the solid waste, which is the trash, and then this yard waste is 13%. Those are the two larger percentages on the revenue side. And then from the use of funds side, we do have 35% on the employees, we do have 17 on equipment, 17 on landfill costs, it's taking it to the landfill. And then vehicles is a allocation to be able to purchase those vehicles on an ongoing basis, keep it kind of consistent. The other, other one includes the workers' comp, commodities, indirect cost, and contractual services that solid waste has.
Nick, and you probably can't answer this, but with the yard waste, can we just have some clarity, and maybe Jonathan can help? There's so many different bags that are sold at different stores that you don't know if that bag you need a sticker, or if this bag you don't need a sticker.
That would be Jonathan.
How can we, how can we simplify that whole process?
That's a good question. I don't have a good answer for it, unfortunately. There is one bag that is, any bag can be used, any paper compostable bag can be used to dispose of yard waste. The Metro Waste Authority has their Compost-it branded bags that take the place of the bag and sticker. So if you use a generic bag, you then have to have a green sticker on it. If you use, if you purchase the Compost-it bag, the price of the sticker is built into the bag. So it just saves everyone a step from having to buy the bags.
But it doesn't say that anywhere when you purchase the bags that need the sticker. Is there a way that we can make sure that it says, this needs an additional sticker to these? Because people, I mean
I don't think so.
I mean, I'm on the Metro Waste Board, I didn't know what bag to buy.
Yeah, those are all, all the, all the other bags, all the non-Metro Waste Authority Compost-it branded bags are all sold by a variety of vendors and a variety of makers, and I don't think we can compel them to print on there something that, something to that effect. Yeah, must have sticker for disposal.
The one thing we should encourage is people to get the bins that you can put yard waste in, right?
Yeah, the, our yard waste cart service is a tremendous value, and it's, it's clear that you could, you know, if it fits, it ships. But the, the stickers and the bags, the Compost-it bags are available for sale at most, most vendors, and it is a, when someone elects to use a non-branded bag, it usually takes just one missed pickup and a phone call to our, to our customer service line to educate that resident.
What about the big, I don't know, like 5x10, that you can throw like lumber and stuff that
All those bags?
Oh, those are, I want to call them, the Waste Management brand is Bagster, and those are an additional bulk collection service that is available for, you buy the bag and then you pay, you know, so $25 or $35 for the bag, and then you pay an additional tonnage fee for whatever gets put in there when it finally gets
Is it a special pickup, or does it go with your garbage day? Because I've seen
It's a special pickup.
Yeah.
It's by appointment through, through a private hauler, as if one were having a, it's basically a very inexpensive dumpster service.
Maybe, maybe the next city source, we can put some stuff down, you know, before the bags to buy, know that you have to call, because I've seen them sit out for weeks on curbs. I don't think people know they have to call for a special pickup.
Oh, for the, for the Bagsters?
Yeah, the big ones.
It's, I bought one, it's on the, the paper when they buy it.
Oh, the big, the
When you buy a Bagster
Small mini dumpster you can put out on the, on the curb, basically.
Yeah.
It does say that, because
Yeah, it's, it says in there that you have to call for
Unfortunately, people don't read directions, Jonathan.
No.
But it might be nice if we can do some
What we have for our fiscal year 23 rates is listed in this table. Right now, we do not have a recommendation for an increase for 2024. We don't anticipate needing one at this time. There's a couple of different variables we want to make sure, and we think we're sitting okay currently with that. Some of the different things that we are looking at before we discuss rates is, I'll get on the summary slide on that, but one of the things is we're still waiting to see what the electric truck is. We haven't received that yet in possession, so we don't know how that will affect our fleet going forward. So from total revenue side on the, on the solid waste, you can see there is an outlier for fiscal year 21, which is bond proceeds, which were used towards MSC2. And then, so that kind of threw off kind of a uniqueness in that particular, the rest of the years are pretty consistent for the regular costs, or revenues, sorry. As we look at the expenditure side, we do have that corresponding transfer of bonds into the CIP, the MSC2 project itself, which kind of threw that off, but then we also have some other uniqueness that I wanted to touch base. Obviously, with, with issuing the bonds, you do then have debt, which started in that fiscal year 21 as well. As well as you can see, the other kind of unique color up there is yellow, which is the vehicle purchases. After that fiscal year 2020, showing the drastic change from 19 to 20, we are approaching the vehicle replacement a little bit differently, and this is on that slide. You can kind of see from fiscal year 15 on, it was kind of very sporadic on when we were purchasing vehicles and how we were accounting for it. We now are kind of shifting to more of a, an allocation, so that each year you're putting, we're putting in a million five into that, so that whenever it needs to be purchased, you're only seeing that steady 1.5 within the operating.
But that's not strictly used for like
No, no, that's what we need for our existing
Yep.
Yep.
Will we also use those?
That I'm not entirely sure on, okay. So for the, kind of the next steps, and as we're kind of looking forward with the solid waste piece, the recycling changes, you have the Metro Waste Authority opening in Grimes that started November of 21. We are still within the contract negotiations with them on that, and right now, we are currently not having a change in the rates, just because you can't, as of right now, I think we are operating where we need to be, and so until we know what the final negotiations on that recycling, as well as the, if there's anything that we do beyond the pilot of the electric truck.
So we're not currently using the new facility?
We are.
We are, okay.
Yes, we just have to finalize the contract terms with them.
Okay.
It's really, yeah, it's back in there, yeah, yeah. Yeah, drafts, yeah, drafts have gone back and forth on different terms.
You getting your steps in today, Jonathan? So, one time, there was a shortage of replacement vehicles. Is that still ongoing or getting better or back orders, I guess?
The, the new vehicle market has recovered in large part, not entirely, but there's still a lot of supply chain issues, but we're, we're seeing delivery times recovering.
Okay, yeah, I think there was a company in Green County, I can't remember, that's kind of, that's their whole market are the trucks that you use in this, and they were backordered.
The heavy-duty vehicle market is, has always worked on a backorder basis. A lot of the, they won't make the vehicle until you order it, and lead times got longer as the pandemic kicked off, and they've shortened backup a bit. By way of example, the electric vehicle, the electric garbage truck will be here. I would have put 24 months on it, but we're now expecting it in about the 12 to 14 month time range from when we placed the order.
And has your move to the new building, MSC2, have you realized any efficiencies? Just
We are
In broad strokes?
Yeah. In, the easiest illustration for, for the, for the benefit of putting what's been seven different buildings worth of people into one space is that, for the first time in probably decades, the Public Works Department is housed in one space, except for the wastewater treatment plant staff, they're still housed at the plant and will remain there by necessity. But we have, we took seven different buildings and put them into one place, so we have coworkers that have never actually seen each other, you know, passing in the break room or, or back and forth in the mornings, that have never, never, never coexisted in the same space. So having a chance to build a common culture in, inside one, one, underneath one roof is nice. Operational efficiencies, the easiest illustration is, is actually in snow plowing, because we have the 17 have the, the 17 snow plows that service the, the snow routes for, for that first wave of snow removal. Those trucks are now for the first time parked in a heated garage. So we've always had vehicle engine heaters, they plug in and it warms up with an electric heater, the, the cooling system. So the engine's always been ready to go, but the cab is always cold when you get in. But more importantly, the salt in the back was the same temperature as the air outside. So if it was zero degrees outside, the salt was zero degrees. Salt pulls moisture out of the air and you can get that salt try to turn back into solid chunks, it will freeze and that would require someone standing on the back pounding it. So what it's got us is, is room temperature salt ready to go. So the truck is ready to go. The driver does their inspection and they're out the door in five minutes as opposed to what could have been a much longer pre-trip and equipment readying process. So they're, they're able to respond to, to the, the winter weather events with salt spreading almost immediately after, after activation. They come in, check in, get their assignment, head out to the truck, do their walk around and they're out the door in minutes as opposed to what could have been a substantially longer period of time.
Does that improve the salt on the roads if it's starting at room temperature instead of starting frozen?
Um, it will, it will cool off pretty quickly once you put it down. And the, the kind of the, the governing temperature is the ambient air temperature and the road temperature.
Okay.
It, it will start melting faster because it, it, it will leave the building at room temperature, but I imagine it pretty quickly cools off to whatever the outside air is once it gets going. But importantly, it stays in that granular state so it can be spread almost immediately and doesn't require manual labor to break it up.
Right. Anything else? Thank you. Let's move on. Storm sewers.
Storm sewer, I'm surprised.
We've kind of had a little discussion of that on the separation side, but let's hear about it.
This is more specifically on the stormwater side itself versus, versus that separation project. This was established back in 94. We do have the stormwater maintenance at that, that just under the 600 miles. We also have the 34 pump stations and then the street cleaning is under, with, under the stormwater guys as well and the levy work of the mowing and inspections as well as under, under the stormwater. One, one key thing to terminology is the ERUs, which is the equivalent resident unit. And that's what we kind of bill, bill off of. So it's basically the equivalent resident unit of, of what that impervious area on a particular lot is. So, did you have a question?
Does the stormwater go through the WRA as well?
Uh, no, no, it, it does not.
Cool.
Only the combined.
Oh, well, yes, the, the combined gets pumped to WRA, but it's not, uh, there's no WRA costs that are associated to the stormwater itself.
It all goes to the sanitary sewer?
Yeah, yes. So we do have compliance also on the stormwater side for federal and state laws and on the flood, flood prevention. We do have mitigation and water pollution prevention as well as the planning, design and structure projects. And then also the public education piece that we, we have within the stormwater utility. Here's that point one to finish off the full FTE. So as you can see here, we do have the stormwater maintenance, the street cleaning is another 22 pump stations is set. And so we did have a couple, a couple items that were within this, this, this budget in addition for that generator was a half here and a half on the sewer side. And then an additional truck on this side was added as well.
Do you want to explain to everybody why you put street cleaning in stormwater?
Um, I think the, the, the assumption there, obviously that was before my time here, the thought that I extracted out of the information I could find would be the street cleaning prevents it from going through the stormwater system that we have, the storm sewers and everything like that. So from that, guys, you're, you're having it prevent the possible damage or maintenance that would have to relate to that.
Also, any flooding, any flash flooding situations, you want to make sure that the storm pipes are being kept clean? And the way to do that is to, to clean the streets themselves before the debris gets into the pipes?
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Um, this is the operating revenue over the, from 2018 to 14 with our anticipated request for a rate increase on, on stormwater as well. As we look at the recommended budget as a breakout of where it is for cost, the largest percentage obviously is the operation cost, but then the, the next one would be debt. We do have revenue debt on the stormwater side for, for some of the projects that we have taken on and, and then anticipate in this next fiscal year as well for issuance. And then the next biggest component is the transfer to CIP. So we do have a lot of cash going into the CIPs as well. As we look at the cost over the 19 through 24, some of the things to note as a larger dollar amount is the other charges. The, the fiscal year 2019 was right after the flood. And so there was that, the council had, had discussed that 9.5 transfer for, for purchasing of properties back then from the, the 2018 flood. Some of the other items to note as well is that transfer to CIP, we did do a large amount of transfers in that following year as well with what cash we had to be able to go towards some additional projects. As we look at some of the funding sources that go into our CIP projects, you can see we do have about nine million of, of ARPA funds going into CIP projects as well as we have a sales tax increment that is going into the flood mitigation. It looks like we need to update the 2027 numbers, so we'll get those updated and send out the file again. We also have some storm, stormwater revenue debt for large components within the current fiscal year that we already issued as well as anticipate another issuance in 2024. The stormwater fund is the transfer from operations into CIP. And the transfer in is coming in from other projects that the project costs are actually in kind of from other projects going into the, the stormwater side. So you're actually seeing it from some of the other CIPs coming into this project.
Nick, could you go back to the bar graph just before this?
Sure.
What's the dark blue?
I'm sorry?
What's the dark blue?
The dark blue at the bottom is the, that got dropped off, that's our operational costs.
Okay.
So, yep, the employees and, and different things like that. So from the expenditure side, as it breaks out by project, you can see some of the different investments that we have anticipated with the Closest Creek watershed improvements over the next three fiscal years, flood mitigation, some of the citywide, we've already allocated knowing that we're going to have some additional costs with the citywide master plan coming out. So we wanted to at least start allocating some to, for, for that, for projects that, that come out of that as well.
Is that the?
That's the very, the very, very bottom, that citywide.
The very top one?
The very bottom, the citywide.
The very bottom, citywide stormwater.
Yep.
And what did you call it? The Baxter? Maybe I just didn't understand.
The master plant.
Master plant. Master, okay.
And have we got that report as far as the master plan to see how this financially matches it?
And then my question is, is the flood mitigation improvement, do we know where that's, where that's being used? Is it?
To answer your question on the, the flood mitigation, that's the, the levy improvements that are wrapping around downtown presently and extending down river.
Got it.
Your question was the master plan is in final, final draft review and we expect to get the finished copy in the next several weeks. But we'll be bringing that back to, to you all for our final presentation here this, this spring, late winter, early spring.
So based on what you anticipate is the 2 million?
Uh, this, yeah, these are placeholders and, and we'll be able to fill in blanks with more specifics once we get the final copy of the report.
But no.
I was just, is it a good?
Eight million is not anywhere close to what that report will say.
Oh, yeah, that's not.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was getting.
That's what I was, that's what I was picking up on, yeah.
Yeah, every time we get a, you know, do a section of stormwater, it seems to be like eight million, four million.
Jonathan.
Nice placeholder, but probably not enough.
Is that plan being finalized before our final CIP is approved?
Um, no, we will not, we're not, we're not expecting to get that before, it might be in our hands by mid-March, but it will not, it will not feed into the, to the next fiscal year budget.
So we, we've got that 2 million placeholder for 23, 24, which is what we're talking about. But we might need more than that in this fiscal year?
That will give us the ability to take some early action on the, the kind of the first, the first fruits of the report. But the, the real meat of the, the, the report's outcome will be in later years.
Okay, so you'll just, you'll just take what you can't, you'll take up the 2 million, use the 2 million and then, and then next year when we're talking about this?
Yeah.
We'll be looking at real numbers?
Yeah.
Okay.
With specific projects.
Okay.
Jonathan, the flood mitigation, you have said that levy improvements.
Mm-hmm.
Do these improvements meet both FEMA and Core standards?
Yes.
By that, I mean FEMA will say, oh, you're 95% you know, protected, so you're not protected because you missed the five. But Core will say, oh, on our cost benefit analysis, that's only a 5%, so you, you don't meet standard to, to do it, which has been one of the huge things that we've had to battle with those two entities is we want to make sure we meet the FEMA standard so that everybody can get insured.
Yes, if I remember right, we've aimed for a higher standard and then some for the, the, the design level of protection in each of the improvement phases so that we are both meeting any existing standard and also building in some future proofing.
So for everybody that's listening, we have been approved by both bodies, right? For and FEMA.
Don't believe they've done the certification because they won't do it till after the improvements are done.
But they've approved the plan?
Yes. They will be able to approve of the, the, the Core has approved the plans, FEMA will, will certify the levy after it's constructed. They don't talk to each other.
And that's been a long time.
Yes. Yep, we, we've been aiming, aiming for, for more than the minimum because reasonable people can conclude that things will get worse before they get better. Built in some, some spare capacity.
And you had a few colonels come and go since then and that makes a difference.
And generals, I think we're still on the current general though.
Generals, I'm sorry, generals.
She's still, she's still there.
Forget the colonels.
Yeah. They get, they get two years and the colonels get two years onsite and then they move on somewhere else. The general gets, I think, three.
They get three.
Um, so we have flood mitigation improvements, levy maintenance and improvements and the George flag levy replacement. Is, I'm just wondering the reasoning behind having those different lines?
Uh, the George flag Parkway levy replacement is a separate project from the, the flood mitigation. It's not, it's not part of the, the levies in the 111 million dollar package that was funded by the state flood mitigation board. It, that's the gate closure at Des Moines Water Works.
Okay. And then the levy maintenance and improvements is just kind of ongoing? I mean, it looks like we're not using that anymore.
That, I'm not exactly sure what, what all is included in that one, but it would be pump stations and, and improvements that are outside of the, the, the major project is the raising of the levies along, along the rivers.
Okay, thank you.
Jonathan, this may be a question for you and Steve Neber. So the, when the east-west portion of ML King is going to be torn up, I think this summer, is that start, is that a stormwater project?
Um, that is a, that's the Ingersoll Run Sewer Separation Project being done by the, the WRA.
Okay.
So that is a storm, it's a sanitary sewer capacity project to alleviate the, one of the remaining overflows at 22nd and High. So it, it is putting pipe capacity to deliver.
Okay.
Sanitary sewer to the plant.
And that's going to roughly tear up the eastbound section of ML King from?
Yes, it's in a couple phases.
Basically the ballpark to?
There's three phases to the project and I, I forget what the dividing line is between, between the different phases at the moment. But yes, it, it will run almost all the way down Martin Luther King Parkway.
But I think we did it all out.
Yeah.
At all.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're on our, we're on our way with that one.
And that's going to kick off soon then?
Yes.
Okay.
This is the overall CIP projects that we have on the Closest Creek Watershed. Do you want to talk any more in depth on each one of these or?
We're pushing nine o'clock.
Okay.
We'll go back to the maps that we've looked at for eight years.
Yeah. Okay, I'll get into the summary then. So requirements for flood protection and long-term control plan, separation projects, our significant drivers on the rate. We also have that master plan that, that should be completing soon. And from what we're looking at operationally and what we're seeing with that, the anticipated master plan, CMO and finance are proposing only a one-year increase for the fiscal year 2024. So then that way we can kind of have the discussion more on how much more to invest based off of that master plan and trying to get us prepared to issue more revenue debt if we need to, to be able to hit some of those investments that we might see. So.
That's 1717.
So that's per ERU. So the equivalent? Yeah, depending on, yeah, depending on how much impervious surface that they have on their, on their property. And this also gets us back to the, the July. So we have both the sanitary and storm being rate increase at the same time. We switch to the January, which kind of gets, I think, it gets burdened some on the administrative side on our side as well as Des Moines Water Works.
So if somebody's got like the standard, the ERU stands for, again?
Equivalent.
Resident.
Residential unit.
Residential unit, right. So if they've got that standard, they're, is that one or like sometimes one? So they're paying 1717?
Yeah, it's either half.
A month or a year?
It's either half, one or one and a half.
Right.
Depending on the size of the house.
So they're paying 1717 a month?
Yes.
Okay. And that's not this, that's not what we're proving, we're proving 1635?
Uh, we already have that 16.
What year are we in? We're, we're talking about 24, right?
We're in 23, we're talking about 24.
Okay.
Any other questions as it relates to?
And you said that was, that extra 5% rate increase is to pay for the stormwater master plan?
Um, it's, it's the existing costs, the operating costs as well as the anticipated, what we might have to do for additional. If we do decide what we know from different investments, we will have to have a corresponding, if we do any more additional revenue debt, we will have to have a corresponding ratio of our, how much our revenue generates versus our expenses. So it's anticipation for what that master plan will be.
Just to shout out, I see Patrick Bean in the, in the audience and he's always so helpful, so thank you, Patrick. You're the stormwater guy.
All right. Let's move on to housing services.
So I'm actually going to have Joe take over housing services so I can take it.
All right, we have two more left, so thank you for your patience and excellent questions. I'll be covering the housing services program budget. Housing services consists of two major segments, Section 8 and public housing. Section 8 provides the housing voucher program. Section 8 provides the housing voucher program. It provides rental assistance to about 2,800 individuals and families, and our average payment per, per family is about $505 per month, that's all determined by the feds. There is a slight increase, I believe we were at 480, 490 last year, so it did increase slightly. The list just reopened, and I'm, I will defer to Chris for the exact number of individuals on the list, but we reopened the list in November of 2022.
Mayor members of council, Chris Johansson, Neighborhood Services Director. For the list we opened in 2022, we had 3,600 applicants, we still have about.
On the waiting list.
On the waiting list, we still have about 1,000 on the old list, with about 700 of those we're currently working with.
So you had 2,800, they got it, and then we also have another waiting list of 3,600?
Yeah, 30.
Individuals and families?
3,600 families.
Plus another old waiting list?
Plus another list from 2021, where we still have about 1,000 on that list that we're currently working with.
You said you're working, you said you're working with 700, and that's people who are not housed, but that you are working with?
Correct, correct.
Thanks, Chris.
So Chris, is that 4,600 total then?
Yeah.
On the waiting list, right?
On, on two waiting lists combined, yeah.
And, and that's really all of the area we cover, right? Or is, you know, because you cover more than just Des Moines?
Correct, it's Polk County for Section 8.
Okay.
But the applicants could come from beyond Polk County.
Correct.
It's, it's important to understand that you could be applying from another state to get a Des Moines Section 8 voucher.
How many people are applying from another state?
Uh, we'd have to look, yeah, yeah. We'd have to look.
Do you have like a?
That would be, sorry.
Yeah.
Well, do you have an estimate of just like, like, is it a few or is it a lot?
Um, on the waiting list, I'd, I'd have to look, but just for reference, portability is another thing, so you could have someone living on Section 8 assistance anywhere in the country, and we get maybe 10 a month that port into Des Moines. We also get some that port out going the same way, I'm not sure of that number, but I know the port is probably around 10.
A small as well, you said?
Probably.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if we could, at some point, just get a breakdown of even within Polk County, or some of those numbers. So we could get a better understanding of how we service, not just Des Moines, but also the surrounding towns plus in-state, out-of-state.
Yeah, roughly in Des Moines is roughly, it's always right around 80%, just, just so you're clear.
And that's a federal regulation that vouchers can go anywhere?
Pardon me?
That's a federal regulation that vouchers can go anywhere?
Yes, yes.
It, it would be nice to know what the out of, I mean, if you can just get us that, that would, that would be helpful. And then as far as public housing goes, there's 424 units, we have 34 scattered single-family sites, and 390 units within the, the manors operated by the city.
We still looking at selling those 34?
Yes. Yeah. We're, we're in progress of, of selling those. Uh, this is what the budget looks like for housing, it's about 24, like 24.2 million. The vast majority of those payments are housing assistance payments to, to residents or users of the Section 8 program. Other costs in central office, public housing, and Section 8 are personnel, commodities, those sort of costs. Uh, this slide shows, again, the, the two major pillars of the program, public housing and Section 8. You can see revenues on the right in green and expenses on the left in multicolor. Public housing, we did have a shortfall, we're anticipating a shortfall of $13,000 in 2024. In prior years, it has been more than that, and then any shortfall is, is backed by the general fund, so in our budget, you'll see a transfer of about $13,000 from our, our general fund to, to help with the, the public housing operation. So I think in a later slide, we'll see how high that number had been in recent years, so it's good to see it only at 13,000. And then also, good news with, with Section 8 is we are not anticipating a shortfall. We did have an agreement with some of the suburban communities to help us should we have a shortfall, since we are administering the program for Polk County. Positively, we have not had to utilize that in the past few years, so good news on, on that front.
All right, you said that 13,000 was going to be transferred from the general fund?
Yes.
And so the total cost of our public housing program right now is just around 4 million?
For the public housing component, yes.
For the public housing component, and so 4, 4 million, one one side, 3.5 on the other?
Correct.
Okay, so the total cost of all of our housing is, is just around six and a half?
But that doesn't count?
Or seven and a half?
That, not, that does not include the vouchers themselves.
The vouchers themselves?
Yes.
Okay, how much?
Overall, it's like 20, I want to say 24 million, I'd, I'd have to pull the budget document, but I want to say 24.2, that number stands out.
24.2?
Yep, and 70% of that would be the, the housing assistance payments. So this, this would be the remainder, there might be a little bit in, in central office, that'd be administrative staff. But, but when we, we talk about the programs themselves, this is just, the slide's isolating those two specific programs.
Okay, but the public housing, this is the cost of the housing as well?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
For the, the maintenance, the, the staff to, to run it, those, those sort of things.
Okay, thank you.
Um, this is total revenues and expenditures, again, this is public housing and Section 8 combined. You can see we had a surplus in 2021 of just over a million dollars. That's largely due to, I believe, CARES Act and some other federal funds that we received due to COVID in 20 and 21. Uh, for 2023, the adopted budget, when we presented this last year, we were anticipating a shortfall of about $111,000. Through the budget process, we've tweaked that number just slightly for a anticipated transfer from the general fund to, to housing services of $106,000. Um, and then there's that $13,000 in the 24 recommended budget of the shortfall going to housing. Uh, this slide covers more of the information in detail. Again, we're splitting out public housing and, and Section 8 here as well. Of note, at the very bottom, you can see Section 8, local government, other support, we have not had to use that in, in the past few years. Um, and also, again, bottom, you see our, our deficit numbers reflected there, so we did, we did have a slight surplus in 2022, and we're anticipating, like I mentioned earlier, a deficit, slight deficit in 24.
So all we're paying out of our funds, so the rest of it's federal, all we're paying out of our funds is that 100,000, 100,000, 13,000?
Yes, from, from the, the operating budget, that's the only general fund support towards housing or Section 8, that's accurate. Um, this next slide shows the proration of, of HUD revenues, this has been an ongoing challenge for, for Chris and his staff. Just the, the way the, the federal programs are structured is they are not 100% fully funded. We have seen a little increase in public housing where we're getting close to that 100%, but it's been an ongoing challenge when the federal government's not providing the resources needed to properly administer the program. So we're, we're still seeing that, that 84% proration. Um, recent program changes, I know Chris can speak to some of these, but I know housing has moved on to an online program application, and we're increasing our use of contracts to minimize costs. Our staffing's been pretty consistent throughout the past few years, and we're not anticipating a change in '24. 37, or 35 FTEs, central offices, your, your admin staff, and then caseworkers, a whole bunch of different specific duties related to Section 8 and public housing in those areas. Public housing does have staff related to the repair and maintenance of the manors as well. Challenges and opportunities, I defer to Chris on, on specifics of this, but federal funding remains an unknown. Changes with Royal, Royal View Manor and the demonstration program going on there. We continue to work through our disposition program and selling our scattered sites. We're also implementing the mainstream and emergency housing voucher programs, and then the Section 8 component, the agreement that we have with the suburban, suburban communities is expiring or has expired, so we'll, we'll, we'll want to go forward and see if we want to renew that. Again, it hasn't, we haven't had to utilize it, other than maybe, I think, the first year of the three-year agreement. But current, if we do want to do that, that provides us some support, should we run a deficit in Section 8, they could contribute a, a prorated share of that.
Do we get to choose how many of our vouchers go to mainstream and emergency housing, like different programs, or is that determined federally?
For the mainstream and emergency housing voucher programs, both of those were grant applications that we had to request. So for mainstream, we did receive 50, 58 vouchers initially, and then within about six months, they sent us another 20, so we did receive 78 total there. Emergency housing vouchers was another grant application that we did, that we did apply for, and we received 120.
Can you clarify what those programs are again?
They're specifically for, for homeless individuals.
Okay.
Each of these, the, the one area they are unique is that it is tied to the continuum of care, so we are required to accept, the applications are received through centralized intake of Polk County Continuum of Care, so the primary healthcare receives the applications. Once the applications are received, then they do send them to our staff, and we work with them specifically on the housing assistance.
Okay, and, and the 2080, sorry, the 2080 agreements, that's just for the extra that we have to pay, that we could potentially charge the other communities?
Yes.
Based on?
Pro, prorated by the number of vouchers used in each.
Okay.
Chris, as long as you're at the microphone still, so I thought there was a plan at one point to sell Royal Manor. Is that, is that still in the works?
Yeah, there's a couple things, I'll talk to you a little bit just about repositioning of our public housing units. First, with scattered sites, I heard Councilman Gatto say that earlier, there's 34 single-family units, there's 13 that are currently in an application at HUD. Those 13 are proposed to be sold to Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity. So once that application is approved, which I'm thinking in the la, in the next month or so, we'll be moving forward with sale to, to Habitat for Humanity on those. Habitat would sell them as affordable housing to individuals below 80% median family income.
Sorry, I think I missed something.
Yep, it's all single-family, yeah.
Okay.
How many of those have we sold over the last decade?
Uh, yeah.
Quite a few.
Yeah, 40 or 50, I'd have to look on the last decade, I know 20 years, it's close to 200 properties, probably.
And we collected that money, and then we disposed some of it and contributed to CIS?
Some went to the construction of the, of CIS back when the shelter was originally built, a lot of it was reinvested.
That may be prior to you being here.
Might have been, yes. The CIS construction was.
Yeah, a lot of it was reinvested back into our elderly manors. We did a lot of modernization improvements through those.
And Royal View Manor?
Royal View Manor too.
Received a couple million dollars in improvements.
So 13 out of 34, we should be getting an answer from HUD the next, next 60 days, hopefully, with the sale for Habitat, so that will come right back in front of the governing board. An additional 14 units are going through a homeownership program, so that's where the housing agency will, will work with the current public housing resident to acquire the public housing resident from the housing agency. So out of those 14 units, there's five or six of our current residents are, are ready to go. The additional residents, we're working through homebuyer education classes, some credit counseling, so those, those remaining families are a little bit long, little bit longer term to sell those. That is a plan that HUD has to approve, so hopefully in the next couple of months, that plan will be coming forward to the governing board for approval, then that gets submitted to HUD, and then HUD eventually will approve that plan and we could start. So that remains, I think there will be seven remaining single-family units that we are currently working with the residents on, and that's kind of more, we want, when we first started this, we did not want to, we wanted to work with the families, if some were willing to take Section 8 and go onto that program, we've been able to do that. If they're looking for homeownership, we've been able to do that, so the last seven families, we're still working with to kind of figure out what's, what's best for them and their family. With regard to RAD, that is a, we have a draft of an RFP, we're getting closer with, with Royal View Manor, and at the, once the RFP is released, we'll like be able to identify a partner to work with to redevelop Royal View Manor. Royal View Manor will become a project-based Section 8 property, so instead of being public housing, we'll have 200 units of project-based Section 8 assistance in the, in the property, and it will be owned and managed by another entity. The housing agency will retain a, a land lease, so we will ultimately have control over the property, and this is in perpetuity. This is not a sale, there's no risk of the property not becoming, never ever turning away from being affordable, it's always going to be affordable.
Since no one is saying, I think it's a terrible thing that we're selling off any of our public housing, I know that part of this is because of federal decisions that have been made that are not supporting these programs as they used to, but I don't think that we're moving in the right direction, especially saying that, so we're selling off some housing and then, and then giving it to the shelter, it seems like we're moving backwards on that and saying, we anticipate that, you know, this is going to cause more problems, and like, we're going to have less housing available, I think we should be moving in the opposite direction, and I think it just needed to be said.
One, one thing to note that I, I should say, and this isn't going to answer your question or satisfy it, but, but I, I know, but each of the public housing units that we do sell, we do get a Section 8 voucher, so the total number of families that we do able to provide assistance to in our community remains constant.
Have we been able to follow through with the families who their units have been sold, either they bought it, or they took a voucher, or they moved on to market rate? About the status of those families?
Uh, those that we've sold to, yes. Those that, you know, receive Section 8 assistance, it, it'd be a little more difficult, there's probably a way we could look, but that's 20 years of, of research we'd have to do.
All right, thank you. Let's move forward to the self-supported municipal improvement districts.
Last topic, Smids, self-supporting municipal improvement districts. As kind of an overview to try to discuss kind of what Smids are, it is an area subject to additional tax that the property owners have agreed to want to do that for additional services or maintenance in that area. The SMID must be comprised of only properties that are zoned for commercial industrial, the only residential properties that can be do that are, are those hysterical, historical districts that would be on the residential properties within the Smids. And the CO, the Iowa CO chapter that relates to Smids is actually that 386.3 governs that, and with that, it is one where, when you have to go through and renew or change district sizes, it does go to a vote for those properties.
Is that designated as a historic district based on our standards, like local historic district?
If it is.
Or state or federal?
I think it's a state level, yeah.
Okay.
And how many of those do we have in the city of Des Moines, and how many have taken advantage of the SMID opportunity?
So we do have seven currently in the city of Des Moines. We did have eight, but two merged together. I want to say that's Sherman Hill, if I remember correctly.
Well, but i- in terms of housing residential, Sherman Hill would be one.
I think that's the only one that is the housing piece.
Yep, I think they're the only one that did it.
So this is the seven different areas that we have, Beaverdale Downtown, Highland Park, Ingersoll Grand, Roosevelt, Sherman Hill, and Southwest 9th. Those actually have the different dates that they were established, and then where they are currently sitting at the end of their authority. So the next ones that are up for extension is the Downtown and the Highland Park SMID districts.
And just typically, and I, I've got to say it, because, you know, I was part of And just typically, and I've got to say it, because, you know, I was part of getting the SMID implemented on the Southwest 9th corridor. There's been zero changes on Southwest 9th. There's been no money from city money invested in Southwest 9th. We have more boarded up buildings now than we had in 2016, when we was trying to do a revitalization. So we have property owner, owners paying additional revenue on the Southwest 9th corridor for nothing that goes into our general fund.
Nope, SMID does not go into our general fund at all.
Part of, whatever.
Nope, SMID is completely separated, does not.
So what are we using the Southwest 9th corridor money for?
So the Southwest 9th, and we'll get into the way that they're, because some of them are internally managed, and some of them are externally managed, there's a four to three split on that, and we'll get into that explanation. But I can't remember off the top of my head which one Southwest 9th is. I want to say, I think they are one where they're pass-through, so it comes in and we pay it off to that group.
Friends of Southwest 9th.
So we don't have anything on our books, other than I think about $3,000 that we have. And it's not in our, it's not in the general fund. It's actually a special revenue that is just coming in and going out.
But as I look at all these other SMIDS, there's been city investment in infrastructure on those corridors, in those areas, every single one of them. You can, you can look at them, you can see over the years, you know, this thing's going to run out in 2027, and we haven't even invested one single, that, that road is, has probably the worst potholes that you can see throughout the entire city. And we have zero in the budget for any type of improvement, other than a study from Dartway to McKinley. So those are topics that Scott and I, but others need to be aware of. And, and my council member to my right, we share Southwest 9th corridor. And, and so I'm hoping that, that we can work out something to where there, there needs to be. I mean, we've had multiple people die on that road. There, there needs to be some improvements to the road. There needs to be infrastructure improvements from the city of Des Moines. And so I'll, I'll end at that, I'll let you continue.
Okay, well, that would be on the CIP side versus.
Yeah, no, I know. And I, but I've been saying it, and there's nothing. There's very few dollars, but we do have, you know, $8 million in there to change grand and locust over the next four years, that I don't think any of the businesses want. But we do have $8 million in there to do that over the next three to four years, to make it two-way. That I don't think any of the businesses want that down there. We can continue, but.
Do you know if Southwest 9th is on the High Entry Network?
I'm sorry?
Do you know if it's on the High Entry Network? The High, that they're putting together for Vision Zero, yeah? Okay, hopefully, that'll push some dollars over there.
If you want to become a SMID area, what it would be like, gonna, it takes commercial rights, so there's different zones. If they aren't involved in a SMID, how do they become?
That might be a question for.
You got to go around to all the businesses and get them to sign others, to say that they want to do it.
Yeah, okay, but is there somebody encouraging people?
Councilmember Hensley and I had to, and John Cacciatore had to go around to every commercial business and get them to sign off on it. Yeah, to get it.
And again, it's, it's about enhanced services that are otherwise not provided the entire, to the entire city.
At the city level, yeah.
But we have no really increase in value on Southwest 9th, is my point, to where the SMID hasn't grown any. So there hasn't been many improvements. Part of that is because we haven't put any infrastructure improvements in there also. To tie, to tie up, because this is going to run out in 2027. And if I had a business on Southwest 9th, I'd be like, I'm not signing back up for this, you did nothing.
What are the enhanced services?
Yeah, it's specific to each, each SMID district.
Think you had it there.
The Schmidt Board can basically decide what they want to say.
Oftentimes, it's street scape.
Yeah, they give facade improvement grants to, to others, but they're just.
Or lighting.
The valuation isn't going up there.
And my understanding on the Southwest 9th is that was for facade improvements?
That's what I just said, yeah. That's what they're doing with, with it, but it's not increasing. We can go back and look at the SMID, because the property values aren't increasing. There's no, there's, I mean, like I said, there is more boarded up buildings now and houses on that street than we've had ever in my memory. And nobody seems to want to do anything about it, other than let them sit there and be boarded up. And we have a vacant registry now. But I can't get any answers, I can't get anybody to, to react. We've got a, we've got a commercial building that's probably been empty for six years down there. An old McDonald's, that every window's busted out and there's, it's all boarded up. Probably longer.
As we look at the SMID levy rates in each of the districts, the maximum rate is indicated for each district. And then the rate that they're actually currently in this fiscal year. The only one that isn't at their max rate at this time is the Downtown.
What's that max rate based on?
That would be through the ordinance that they passed and voted, or and got approved.
So then, how do they determine not to get to the max rate if that's what they agree upon?
They have the authority to go up to that, but as they go through their budget process, that's what determines what levy they need. As we go through the budgeting process for SMIDS, the, the four that we have internally are that Beaverdale, Highland, Roosevelt, and Sherman Hill, where there's not an audit requirement needed, because they submit documentation for items to get paid, or them to get paid back from our account. The other three, which is Downtown, Ingersoll, and Southwest 9th, are ones where it is more of a pass-through. So we actually send money to them, and then there's an audit requirement done, because they facilitate their paying the expenditures on their side.
I'm sorry, when they have, when the Schmidt folks, when the Schmidt Board says, we're going to have our board meeting, how are the Schmidt participants notified? Does that from the city, or is it up to the Schmidt Board to have all of that conversation with their fellow people? Because I've heard some people say, I didn't even know I was in a Schmidt. And so I'm just kind of curious.
I'm pretty sure it's, it's up to the SMID Board to establish their communications.
That's what I'm kind of thinking too.
We do have staff that, that work with them, but it's on the financial aspect of it.
Are, so are they staff through your department, through finance?
There is some within Development Services as well. I know, I remember.
Kyle.
Kyle, thank you.
So are they that kind of staff like our boards and commissions, where there's always going to be someone from the city there?
That's usually within kind of their staff's purview on the assistance that they have from our side. Jay Carlson is the one that works on the financial side to look at what we're seeing with, on the ins and outs, and what we anticipate for growth and stuff like that. So we will always have somebody assigned to it, because it's just a part of our, our budget. It's special revenue that's completely separate from any of our other regular operations. So we need to be able to track it for our, for our purposes.
Oh, so does their fund pay into the staffing as well? No.
It doesn't take a lot of time on, on our side, as a grand scheme of things on the budget, as well as processing those invoices, in comparison to what they have to do for, for the rest of their other, their staff time. But no, currently, we do not.
Okay, that's fine.
To specifically get into the financial data, we'll kind of go through the four that we maintain, the funds coming in, and then as we have the expenses go out, where they submit the invoices for us to either pay or pay them back for the ones that they paid. Beaverdale, Highland Park, Roosevelt, and Sherman, these are the activities through what we anticipate for fiscal year 2024. As you can kind of see, the items that are kind of of concern with kind of some of the negatives that we're seeing with Beaverdale, so we're kind of communicating with them that their, their expenses have outpaced their revenues, and kind of trying to figure out where they're going to go from that standpoint. And then also Sherman Hill, they have a large amount of fund balance, and their anticipation is to, the use of that is anticipated for decorative pedestrian, street lighting, and, and some of their landscaping and benches that they have.
Is the SMID based on area, so like if a new business comes in, like in Beaverdale, like there was a new, you know, fairway?
If it's within their designated area.
They automatically are paying into the SMID, okay.
As we go into the three that are operated, kind of operated out separately, whereas we're more of a pass-through is what comes in, and then we end up sending the information out. They process their own payment, you know, their accounts payable, accounts receivable, their type of activity. That's the Downtown, Ingersoll, Southwest 9th. We do have a balance in with like the Ingersoll Grand for an agreement that we have with them, that we have a certain percentage of their maintenance cost that we maintain. If they have to step away, we would have that, that's part of the agreement that we have with SMID. The rest of it then goes out through the process of kind of application of abatement, and some, some different of the payments ended up getting a little bit lower than, than we, than we wanted. And so you see that growth happening within the 22, 23, and 24, to get it back to that, what's needed on the, on the city side. And from this, we go into their specific budgets themselves that they submitted. So if we go into the Downtown, and they submit what they have for their estimated revenues and expenses for the current fiscal year that we're in, as well as the 2024. And so.
To be less, is that operation Downtown, is that what that?
Yeah. It's more, it's about half a million dollars more on the total expenses.
Four eighty-seven, four eighty.
1.1 versus 1.3 on the Downtown maintenance.
Oh, I didn't see, okay.
Yeah, the revenue side versus the expenditure side on the bottom part of it. So they do anticipate a deficit in the 2024 recommended budget. And they are currently maintaining, the current fiscal year is going to anticipate ending at 3.5. As we look at Ingersoll Grand, this particular area is showing a net loss at its current. Say, like I said, part of that was the, some of the valuation not being abated, application being corrected, and, and also kind of what they have on the expense side. So there is some of the discussion that they are going to have, exploring the, their administrative costs, going, being shared between the 501(c)(3) that they have versus the SMID. And so that you might see this in future years changing on, on their cost structure going forward. From the Southwest 9th corridor side, this is showing the anticipated revenues that they have, just from the property tax revenue, and then what they have for expenses, and is showing a minor surplus of about $3,000 in the 2024. Any other questions on SMID?
Anything? Nick, thank you very much. Everybody, good set of questions this morning. Mr. Manager, we look forward to finishing this budgeting process discussions. And any other comments you want to make?
Nope, that'll occur at 7:30 on Friday morning, with the general fund, CIP, and a couple of the other operating funds. Fri- Friday.
It will probably be longer, it's the general fund, kind of a little bit on road use, a little bit on local option, and our CIP, CIP book as well.
So next Monday, you're kind of got open door policy to come talk about it?
Yes, well, I'd like to, let me know.
Okay, by appointment policy.
That way we don't have more than.
Are you going to have any community input?
We have had quite a bit of community input.
I understand, but are you going to have, with the finalized budget, you're going to go out and say, this is what we're doing based upon your input? Because the couple, three of them that I attended were not well-attended.
Correct, it's always a challenge to get more participation at the budget discussion.
Yeah, well, some of the ones in the past, we used to have 50, 75 people show up.
True, oftentimes, those had advocacy groups that were very participative. Don't have that anymore.
Well, I just want to make sure that the needs and the wants of the.
I think that we need to look at, you know, if people aren't coming before, they're going to do anything until they see actually what the budget is being proposed. You can't react, you can say what you want, but I think you have more of reaction when people see how it's being spent, so. Going forward, maybe need to flip it a little bit.
Scott, was the format previously, like, I remember one going at the Bright Clubhouse, that I, okay, tonight, we're going to discuss libraries and parks. And so the locations moved around the city, but the topics were, it was sliced up for more departmental. That's my recollection of it.
So, yeah, we've tried a lot of different methods to.
Seems like the attendance was higher when it was, well, that's just my recollection of it, so. Something to think about, anyway, going forward.
And it was, you know, a lot of it was driven by the council. Because we'd reach out to our neighborhood associations and stuff and let them know what's going on. And then, hey, we're going to be here. All right, everybody, anything tonight, 5 o'clock? All right, no pre-meeting, right? No closed session, thank you all for attending, this meeting's adjourned.